To protect Cape Cod's advocacy training series. My name is Catherine Clark and I'm the new VP of Community Engagement here at Housing Assistance Corporation. And tonight, we are presenting our town meeting 101 ser- um. It's 101 session, which is the last of our advocacy series, which is facilitated by the amazing Stephanie Cox, who is the Executive Officer at Home Builders or Remodelers Association of Cape Cod. And tonight Stephanie will facilitate and informative discussion, just in preparation for spring town meeting season, which is great. And we want to make sure, you know, really everyone feels comfortable showing up, speaking up and taking action in their town this season. And to help answer your frequently asked questions towards the end of the session, such as what's the best way to get prepared for a town meeting? Where do you start getting engaged in your community? We're excited to welcome Ned Chaddalane Brewster Selectman Ned. Ned is very active in the Cape community and is a member of the Brewster Select Board and former member of the Planning Board. So we wanted to invite him to join us and speak from personal experience. So he will be up on the screen soon with you all, just helping to answer questions. And just some last, just housekeeping items. This session will be recorded. We always send a recording and a room, just a recap email afterwards, so that you all will receive that. Any questions throughout this training? We really want this to be a nice, dynamic conversation. So raise your hand, add your question in the chat. I'll be moderating that, moderating that for Steph since she'll be really leading the presentation. So please stay engaged. But with that, I will pass it off to you, Stephanie.
Thank you, Catherine, and nice to see everyone here. Definitely, as I was saying before, see some familiar faces and certainly some familiar names. So first, I just want to pause and Ned, if you could just wave your hands so that folks know who you are. Brewster Selectman, helping us out, as mentioned. And then I also saw the name Thomas Mokley. Is that Representative Mokley? And if so, would you like to just say hello?
Hello, everybody. I'm brand new state representative for Falmouth Vineyard in Nantucket here. Saw the, saw the event on your newsletter and figured I'd pop in because I love town meetings. I've been an elected town meeting member in Falmouth since 2020. And you know, as, as the talk ofville says in his Democracy in America, you know, he finds it to be one of the most purest forms of democracy. So thank you all on the call for getting involved.
Well, welcome. We are so happy to have you here. And if we do get any questions about elected town meeting, former government in Falmouth, I will know who to call on.
Okay, sounds good.
Necessarily have a ton of information being, being a mid Cape girl.
The, the, the best source of information for that would be State Rep Davia, because he's also our town moderator.
That's true. He is, yes, a jack of all trades. All right. So I'm just going to share my screen. Were there any other elected officials here that I missed? I always want to make sure we introduce folks. Okay. All right. So I'm going to go to our presentation. Can everybody see the slide deck? Yes, okay. So, uh, let me just get it moving. Okay, so we're starting off with just sort of the general forms of government. So, you know, in Massachusetts, we have essentially three different types of city, of forms of government. So you've got, you know, your bigger municipalities that are going to have a city or town council. Barnstable is the only Cape example of that. You know, Hilda, I know you're a Barnstable resident, so you're probably familiar with the town council. They are the, the decision-making body and they have an appointed town manager. So you know, this is for kind of the, the bigger, the bigger towns where maybe they started out, let's, let's back up. Let me back up. Town meeting started as, as representative said, as sort of this purest form of government. When everybody who could vote, which let's be honest, was the land-owning, older white men in a town could fit under one roof, which intended to be the church in the 1600s, right? So it was a way of how we would all get together and make decisions for the community when it was a small, small community. So that's a town meeting in its purest, purest form is that, that pure direct democracy. But as towns start to get bigger, that becomes a little unwieldy. You can't fit every voter under one roof when you're a town of the size of Falmouth or Barnstable. So then basically with, with the next form of government would be, you know, representative town meeting, which Representative Mokley had mentioned, he is an elected member. So people in his precinct get to vote for him or for another candidate. And they are then elected to go and represent their constituency at town meeting, making those votes. And so Falmouth is the only example of that on the Cape. So Falmouth being bigger than most other towns, but not necessarily quite as big as Barnstable. So just going back to Barnstable, Barnstable's huge. And it just became, so they were at one point, they started off as regular open town meeting, which is the main thing we're going to talk about tonight. Got too big for that. Then they went to the elected town meeting format that Falmouth has, got too big for that. I think my grandfather was actually an elected town meeting member back in, in the days of Barnstable. And that, but it just got too big. So then they went, switched to the cit- the town city council. So that's where people in the precinct vote directly for this representative, representative to make these decisions. And you know, what they all have in common is that whether it is representative town meeting, open town meeting, or town council, though that is the, what is called the governing body, that is the decision-making body, that that ultimately is at the hot, the top of the sort of hierarchy of the town. They, you know, they are the ones responsible for ultimately deciding what is the policy that may be informed by selectmen or town boards and committees or what have you. But the governing body is the one that ultimately makes the decision one way or the other. So in Barnes, so in Barnstable and Falmouth, you've got those two examples and you know, the way that you would have your voice made is through contacting either your town councillor in Barnstable or your elected town meeting member, members in Falmouth in order to make your wishes known. If, if you find out about what's happening on the, you know, warrant in Falmouth or in the case of Barnstable where they have, they don't have town meeting. They have regular sessions. I think it's every two weeks of the town council. You can weigh in that way. But with every other town on the Cape, we are the old school open town meeting. And that means anyone who is a registered voter in the town is that decision-maker. You are part of that body of decision-making. And it's, it is really, really cool. Like you can, you can see people if they decide to show up, really make the difference one way or the other on really important housing or environmental or other policies or really random stuff like, like the, the telecommu- like the telecommunications, communications or cable budget. It's always very interesting with town meeting, like, you know, you can vote on something that's a multi-billion dollar, multi-million dollar program or operating expense. And then people want to talk about a $10,000 line item. It's always interesting. So, but before it gets to the stage, if you've attended any of our other trainings, we've talked about how it goes, you know, the legislative authority, the decision-making body is the last step in a multi-stage process. So by the time that you are finding out about it, when you're going to town meeting, there has been a lot of discussion. There's been a lot of fine tuning. In the case of zoning changes and a number of other types of policies, there needs to be a public hearing. You know, there may be various changes and amendments brought forth. And so what you end up having before you, ideally, not always, but ideally is going to be very well-vetted. That being said, it can be well-vetted and you can still disagree with it. So you know, your voice is really, really important here. And so, you know, I think too, when we're talking in the frame of advocacy, I know certainly I find it easy to be overwhelmed with all the different things that are going on at all sorts of levels of government. So I, you know, I find it's helpful to, to kind of pick one or two maybe areas of, of personal concern and kind of let other people specialize in other areas. And so, you know, for me, it's housing. Hopefully for the rest of you, it's housing. But that being said, you know, thinking about if you're identifying that there's a, there's a specific issue coming up at town meeting, you know, you want to have a sense of what its impact is going to be, what how's this going to impact housing, year-round housing, what have you. Another thing just to be thinking about when you are reading town meeting warrants is what is the viability of this, right? So because our democracy allows for a direct petition of government, anyone can submit a, a article for consideration if they get, you know, a certain number of signatures from, from residents. I think it's like 100 or something. So you know, there may be something that is controversial, but it's not necessarily something that has a full support of, you know, all of the decision-makers that have been involved thus far. So it's just something to kind of think about. State, local and national level. Sometimes people throw stuff out there that's, that's not necessarily going to go anywhere. So is that where you want to put your, your energy, right? That's just something to think about. So where you can keep up with your town is thankfully, most towns are finally, finally on, on Facebook, just as most people are getting off of it. But a lot of them will have, you know, I think Barnstable is a good example. They, they put a decent amount of information up. A lot of them have an e-newsletter. That's another great source of information. Again, I'll kind of go back to Barnstable. Falmouth might as well, but a lot of towns will have, you know, a really kind of robust community access TV program. So that's one option. Sadly, the community newspaper is less of something that, that we can rely on in this day and age. But there are still a few holdouts, thank goodness. And those are really where you're going to get probably more details about what's being discussed, both just in general in your town, but also specifically leading up to town meeting. Unfortunately, we can't necessarily rely on some of our more traditional institutions to report on that anymore. You can also go ahead and create a Google alert for your town. I've done that too. When I just wanted to find out when they were in the news for doing something. Oh, but other ways that you can make sure that you're getting more plugged in. So, you know, we want folks to be attending town meeting, but we also want you, you know, as much as you can to, to be part of your community. And so there are civic associations. There's sometimes citizen advisory committees. There are a bunch of different town committees that you can get on. Some of them are long-term, permanent, like Planning Board, which Ned has been on in his town to, you know, your short-term that have a very narrow, narrow focus. You know, just a temporary thing that they're looking at. It's a nice way to get to know the various players in town. And it's a new set of, of language too. So when you're going to these public meetings, especially, you know, public hearings and then town meeting, you know, you are going to hear Mr. Moderator, I move and, you know, question the, the presence of a quorum, all, all these, these different things. You know, that is a slightly different language, which if you're like me and you worked in the legislature, it's totally normal. But if you're like most people, it might take you a hot second to, to get used to it. But it's just a, it's a form of making sure that the meetings go smoothly and that there's a level of predictability for all of the participants. Another thing to bear in mind is that for any public meetings, open the state, open meeting law applies. So, you know, towns have to post, this is not just for a town meeting, but like for regular meetings, they have to post an agenda. I think it's 72 hours in advance. They have to, you know, make sure that they're not discussing an issue, you know, outside of a public meeting with a majority of members. That's a big no-no. So, you know, just be aware that, that these are some of the governing rules and part of the language of getting used to, to town government. And then when you go, whether it's to a public hearing, to town meeting, if you do decide you're going to be really ambitious and actually speak up, which you, you don't have to, like you can just go and vote. That's totally fine too. But if you do decide that you're going to speak up, you know, there's usually a line or a place that you can sign up at town meeting. It's usually you get up behind the microphones. There's usually four in an auditorium, three or four, and you'll, you know, want to get up ahead of time because those lines can get kind of long. If it's a public meeting, then it's usually there's either a signup sheet or when they open up the meeting, then you're going to want to kind of go up or raise your hand right away. Just so that you're, you know, your whole day is not, you know, wait, spent waiting. When I was super involved with Cape Cod Young Professionals, one of the things that we did was, you know, I lived in Dennis, some of my, my friends in Dennis, we got together, went out for dinner beforehand. You know, and then we all sat together and it was fun, you know, make it, make it an enjoyable night out if you can. But one other thing to kind of bear in mind is with these public meetings, it's usually a one-way dialogue. So if you're giving any kind of testimony, don't necessarily expect that you can ask questions to get answers. At town meeting, occasionally you can. It kind of depends on the will of the town moderator of how much they're willing to, to answer or have staff answer. But that's also part of the, the general norms that I want folks to get used to. And again, this is just a refresh from one of our earlier trainings, but if you do get up and speak, just, you know, take the temperature of the room. Like if five or 10 people have already said the same thing, you don't necessarily need to be repetitive. You could say, you know, I support what has been said and, and, and add one new thing, right? But you, you don't want to ever alienate the, the voting body, right? Another thing to, to just bear in mind is like when you were in elementary school and your teacher would say, okay, we're going to do, you know, write an essay and you start off with an intro paragraph where you say what you're going to say, and then you have your body of your essay where you, you make your points and then you have your conclusion where you say what you said. It's essentially the same format for giving an elevator speech. So public speaking is something that is one of the most terrifying things for, for most people. So writing it down, totally acceptable. But you know, saying what you're going to say, saying it and saying what you said and thanking people is, is a great kind of way to remember of how to, to go about it. And you're also going to want to make sure that if you are getting up to speak around housing, that you are either bringing in some local statistics or talking points or your personal story. So only you know your housing story. No one else does. And if it's compelling or someone in your family or your family business or what have you is, is you know, really feeling the crunch because of the housing crisis, then that can be extremely compelling when, when used properly. But again, you don't need to worry about speaking if you don't want to. I already went through this elevator speech bit. I'm not going to repeat myself on it. But when it comes to town meeting itself, like I said, you don't have to speak if you don't want to. In fact, most people don't. I was chair of my town's finance committee for a number of years and you know, aside from my official role, the number of times that I ever got up and said anything, I just think maybe twice. So it's, you know, it's not something that anyone should ever feel pressured to do. But as far as attending town meeting, you know, being that decision-making, that governing body, it's always helpful to be as prepared as you can be for town meeting. Realistically, we all have jobs, lives. And some of us have, you know, families, what have you. So if you, if you can't do all this, don't, you know, don't worry about it. It's better to, you know, scram when you're there and, and, you know, and, and vote there than, than not engage at all. But if you can, you know, a lot of towns have gotten really good about making sure that they have either a forum. Ned can speak to what Brewster does. But there's usually like a community forum. Other towns will do a sort of town meeting run-through as part of the board of selectmen's agenda. And so that's a great chance to go in, get your questions answered. You know, you can also talk to staff ahead of time. They, they want, they're there for you to, to answer, you know, your questions. Another thing to think about it too is just, you know, if you do have kids, unfortunately, not every town offers childcare and a lot of them stop offering childcare around 10, 10 o'clock at night. And sometimes town meeting can go until 11. So you want to really figure out that situation. And as I mentioned, you know, go out beforehand and eat, you know, grab something from home, whatever is going to work for you. But trust me, if you are there from like six to 11, you're going to get hangry. So as far as kind of what to expect. So it usually starts on time. And, and the times vary. We're, we have a slide towards the end where we have the dates that our friends at Cape Cod Young Professionals have put together all of the different town meeting dates, but it, you know, so some of them like Chatham start do a Saturday, you know, so the time's going to be totally different for that. But a lot of towns tend to have their town meetings start on a Monday or a Tuesday. Usually, most of them are just going to be like, you know, three, four hours and it won't go a second night. There are some towns that do tend to go for multiple nights. And so that's, it is a commitment, right? And there's occasionally, you know, you're going to occasionally find that, hey, the PTA is selling like brownies in the hallway or other things, but you, you know, you might want to bring some snacks. And, and when you check in, another thing to know is that you're usually, so I'll, I'll just speak from my experience in, in Yarmouth, we have a little yellow tag, a voter tag that you get. And so there is a section that they cordon off for non-voters. And there may be people from other towns or from other, other organizations who want to attend and, and see what's happening, but they're cordoned off. They don't get the voter tag. And so usually votes will be taken one of three ways. So it'll be a, a voice vote where, you know, all in favor say aye, all opposed say, say nay. The ayes have it. If it's something that requires a two-thirds majority or is particularly controversial and the moderator cannot, you know, reasonably make out whether or not something passed or didn't pass. Or someone can just request it, then they'll do a manual vote. And that's where we'll take your yellow, little yellow tag and everyone who is in favor will hold their, theirs up. And then they'll have counters that are appointed by the town clerk to go around and count each section. So keep your hand up until they tell you to lower it. And then some towns like Eastham are just rocking it with the technology and actually have voting clickers, which I wish every town did, to be honest, because Eastham Town Meeting goes way faster than a lot of other towns. So what else? You know, as you are getting into the, the opening, you know, you have recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance, a lot of times, if it's held at a school auditorium, there'll be something with maybe school band or some recognition of some honor students or something like that. You know, it's a nice kind of community thing to start things off. And then usually the first few articles are going to be kind of your, your black and white basic, you know, funding of the budget of the town, your operations. So you know, you're going to have a lot of, a lot of money spent in those first couple of articles. And they usually tend not to be terribly controversial either. Then you get into your capital funding. So that is taking, you know, funding that is outside of the budget, outside of the operational budget. It can be sourced from a variety of different sources, you know. And it's usually part of the capital plan for the community. And so that's, that's usually, you know, we're going to improve this park. We're going to do this boardwalk, et cetera, et cetera. Those items tend to come next. And then you're going to have your more meaty discussions on bylaw changes, whether it's zoning bylaws, which has to do with housing or, you know, maybe a health bylaw or what have you. And so that makes up the, the, the meat of the, you know, 20 to 25-ish articles. Some, some towns do many more, sometimes do less, but we'll say for the sake of a, a argument that, you know, 25, 30 articles are generally going to be gone through in four or so hours with this kind of outline. So now I'd love for for Ben to, to come in and, you know, we're going to talk more about sort of the roles of, of who's doing what. I mentioned the town moderator. He, he or she is elected to, to serve in this role and they are responsible for making sure that the meeting runs smoothly. They're used, they're the ones who are really doing that Roberts Rules of Up Order. They work very closely with the town clerk. And I mentioned the town clerk, you know, they are having people count, making sure that the votes are accurately tabulated. Usually sits next to the town moderator to advise the, the moderator. You've also got your, your town attorney, who you might hear from a lot less, but they're also there to basically make sure that, you know, if somebody offers an amendment from the floor or asks a question or what have you, that the town is, is doing what is legally appropriate. And then you've got your town, your, your select board. So Ned's going to talk a little bit about that. They're usually saying, okay, you know, Mr. Moderator, I move article two as follows. They'll, they'll read the text of the motion and then they'll introduce it and they'll say, you know, Mr. Moderator, this article will provide operational funding for the town at this and this level, et cetera, et cetera. Usually like a paragraph introduction. Then they'll say, and then the moderator will say, what is the select board's recommendation? The select board will say, select board recommends 5-0 or whatever the vote is. Finance committee, what does the finance committee recommend? Finance committee recommends, you know, 4-3, what have you, whatever it is. If it's not related to finances, if it's a zoning, you know, you wouldn't necessarily hear from the finance committee, but you'd hear from the planning board with their recommendations. And then it becomes open to the voting public on town meeting floor. So that's when you're going to have people getting up, asking questions. And depending on what the question is, you'll utilize the town, the, they'll usually have the town administrator kind of provide that big picture detail, how this fits in with other things. And then when people are asking for more nuanced, detailed questions or if they need to do a, a, a presentation with someone who really knows whatever the details of the program or the article are, then you're going to have like your town department head getting into that level of detail. Ned, do you want to jump in here and, and add anything about the different roles?
The roles of staff and elected officials in town meeting, you mean?
Just of everyone who, everyone who tends to, to show up. I don't know if I missed anyone here or if you want to add anything.
I don't have any, oh, did you talk about town attorney, about town council?
A little bit, but if you want to expand on that, you can.
Yeah, I can jump in. I mean, the, the nice thing about having council there is that town meeting is very technical. And it is very commonly the case that a, a question arises about either a point of order or a technical question comes up about one of the articles. And it's, it's been my experience that having somebody who's tasked strictly with that as a third party and answering those questions is, is really a value to the, to the voters. So I would add, you know, you talked about prepping for town meeting. I would add that if you still have questions at town meeting floor, not every town is the same, but I can say that in Brewster, it is commonly the case that we do get that the folks can pose questions for town council to clarify a legal point, either about process or about one of the warrant articles as well.
Thanks.
Can I say one other thing?
Please.
Just wanted to acknowledge too, that my longtime colleague from the town of Orleans, Alan McClellan, I saw, is Just wanted to acknowledge too, that, uh, my longtime colleague from the town of Orleans, Alan McClellan I saw, um, is in the room as well. He's, uh, was a, a selectman for many, many years. And Alan, I would invite, if you have anything else to add, uh, from the perspective of, of a former Orleans selectman, I'd, I'd welcome that feedback.
Absolutely. Feel free to jump in at any point, Alan. Um, but if not, we could talk a little bit more about the, the process. So we talked about sort of the first, those, those first, you know, kind of initial pieces of there's the motion, the explanation, the recommendations. So basically this is kind of all this is to say, hey, town meeting voters, you know, this is what the, this is what we're voting on next. This is um, the recommendations of the people who have really spent time studying the issue. Um, you know, select board from a policy perspective, finance committee from a financial perspective, et cetera. Um, you know, you'll, you can have that Q and A and back and forth from the public. Um, it's not always questions. A lot of times it's just comments of like, I'm, I'm against this, I'm for this, et cetera. Um, but then you, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds on this, but you will see um, from when there's something that is controversial or that people don't like. Um, there are times where you will see a motion from the floor uh, to amend, uh, the, the proposal to say, uh, and it usually has to be submitted to the, the town moderator in writing. Uh, and usually you want to get the, give them a heads up ahead of time. Um, but people will sometimes do that. Sometimes someone will make a motion to, um, to table, um, the, the article. So that's in the case of, you know, you're getting, I think a, a good example of where you would see something like that happen is there's a proposal for a funding of some kind of study or what have you, and the, um, the public is, you know, really kind of hammering, um, staff and staff is just not doing a great job at answering the questions. You know, select words kind of reading the, the tea leaves and looking around like, all right, this isn't going to pass. So maybe one of them will actually preemptively say, you know, um, uh, Mr. Moderator, um, I move uh, to table the motion and they'll bring it back up for reconsideration, um, the following town meeting. Would you agree with Ned? That's kind of the type of situation you'd see that?
Uh, it happens then. I think the other, um, the other, uh, it's, it's been more common in my experience that that happens with citizens petitions. Um, because they, it is often the case that a citizen's petition, uh, though maybe well intentioned, has not been through the thorough public process that the community is used to. And it may be the first time that their, that the, uh, community is able to, to hear the arguments for and against at town meeting floor and that kind of we're, we're used to thinking of town meeting as a deliberative body, but really the hard work is done for the month leading up to town meeting. So if, if folks are hearing about something the first time at town meeting, they're likely to have good questions about it. Um, and not feel comfortable, comfortable voting on it. And if that's the case, I, I would say that it's commonly the case, it takes one or one or two extra cycles for a, a citizen's petition to pass, so that it can, it can get that thorough vetting process that it needs publicly.
Yeah. Another, so another thing that you could occasionally will see a motion on, this is something that I just want to flag for you all as, um, if, if, if you're new to town meeting, um, a lot of times there is a, there is a tendency for folks to stay until their article has been voted on and then leave. The problem with that is that under mass general laws, um, people are able to re- mo- bring up a motion to reconsider a previous vote. Um, so what you could have happen and I've seen happen is all the supporters of, of something have left. And then all the anti-people are still left there and then they, people go home thinking, oh, it passed. No problem. And then, you know, an hour later, um, there's a motion to reconsider and it's, um, it's no longer passed. Um, it's been voted down. So that's why it's super, super important to stick around for the entirety of town meeting, unfortunately.
Can I jump in there, Steph?
Please.
That, that's an excellent point. And, and another wrinkle is that, uh, in the, every town has its, um, has a, a a town charter, um, threshold for quorum. And if folks leave in the quorum, uh, the, the threshold passes below that uh, for quorum, then you have to cancel a meeting and you have to reconvene some other time. Um, and for a town like Brewster where we do two town meetings a year, um, that we are, they tend to be one night because we do it twice a year in the fall and the spring. Um, so really the practical, practically what would happen if we lost quorum was that everybody would go home. We would say we would be doing it again the next night. People would not be prepared for that. They likely wouldn't show up. We wouldn't have quorum. And then we'd end up having a, a situation where whatever hadn't been acted on um, has to wait until the fall. And that can have really dramatic consequences for town operations. So it's, it can be lengthy, it can be boring, especially because there's a lot of stuff that folks, you know, not everything is interesting. It's just, frankly, it's not interesting for some of it. It is important to stay, um, and to, um, and, and to stay through the end of the meeting. And I would add that that's another reason to make sure to your opening comment stuff, that you're prepared and that you're, you're, um, when you do make comment, that it's, it's concise and that it's, um, effective and that you're encouraging your neighbors to do the same thing. So that you don't run the risk of boring everybody into, into their, into little puddles on the ground and, uh, you have to go to a second night.
Yes, absolutely. And that's, you know, I don't think that, you know, there may be some people who disagree with me, but I don't think there's any shame with, you know, bringing, you know, I've seen people bring knitting needles, bring the crossword, bring their laptop, like if you, if you need to multitask to get through it, I, I don't blame you. I mean, I don't want to tell you how many times I've been on my phone during town meeting. So it's, we're being frank and realistic here. Um, and then I think the last thing, uh, you know, on this slide, I just want to mention is, uh, that depending on, um, what is, what the subject matter is, uh, the vote, you know, threshold for pass versus not pass. Um, for most items, it's generally going to be a simple majority, you know, fifty percent plus one. Um, but for, uh, in particular zoning articles, uh, with the exception of accessory dwelling units, thank you very much to the, uh, Healy Driscoll Administration and the legislature for, um, for making that change in the Affordable Homes Act last year. We, uh, now don't have to worry about the two-thirds majority for, for passing ADU bylaws, but for every other zoning change, it's got to go through a two-thirds majority. So that's, you know, it's a high threshold. You've got to, you've got to convince um, two-thirds of the people who are there, that the change is worth making. Uh, you know, or bring more people. Um, so that's generally how that, how that kind of works out. Alan, I see you, you popped on the screen. Do you want to add anything? Oh, hold on, I said we don't have you. I'm going to ask to unmute you. No, it's not working. Well, we can come back once you've got the, the muting situation. So these are our, our upcoming dates, uh, for town meetings. Uh, so we ask you to, you know, note what, uh, the ones that, uh, are, the one is that is applicable for your town. The exception being, you know, Falmouth, um, you, you can't necessarily participate, but you can contact, you know, Representative Oakley or whomever your, uh, elected town meeting, uh, member is. So with these, you know, they all tend to happen around the same time. Uh, the reason for the timing is, um, A, uh, the towns operate on the state fiscal calendar of, uh, July first to June thirtieth. And, uh, they, B, they are waiting for details from the legislature and the governor's office, uh, on what the tea leaves are looking like in terms of what they can expect for local aid. All, all the various forms of locally that form back to the government. So that is, is something that it really informs, just so you know, from a kind of operational budgeting perspective. They're always wondering like, what is the chapter seventy money for that school is going to look like? What is the money for look, you know, the lottery aid going to look like? What's the money for, um, highways going to look like? Um, and then kind of figuring it out from there. So, um, this is kind of the end of the main presentation, but what, one of the reasons we really wanted to have Ned on and, and I'm glad we've got Alan and and Representative Oakley as well is, it's really to open it up to hear from you. What, what are your questions? Um, and no question is, um, is dumb. You know, this is, this is not something that comes second nature to a lot of people. So, um, we're going to open it up from here and please, uh, ask away. And we'll share that, um, that slide. So you all have the dates.
Stephanie, I didn't see Yarmouth on there. Did you, did I miss it or was it?
I don't see Yarmouth on here either. So this is from C C Y P. I guess they missed that one or it hasn't been set.
It has been set because I tried to Google it and I didn't see it either. So I don't know.
Yeah, it might not be set. This is mid-March. I would think they'd have a date at this point, but we're, we, Yarmouth tends to be a little bit later. So I think God, it's only been a year since I've been off finance committee and I've already forgotten. I think it's usually like the first Tuesday in May. But you can certainly, uh, yeah, like keep track on the town's Facebook page or, or website.
Uh, Stephanie, uh, this is Alan.
Hi Alan.
Just a thought about zoning amendments. Um, I, uh, I, I, it was mentioned that I was on the select board at Orleans for six years, but I was also director of planning and development, the town of Arlington, Massachusetts for thirty years. And went to four hundred and fifty town meeting sessions.
Wow.
And took about two hundred zoning articles to the town meeting during that period of time, including a complete rewrite of the zoning bylaw. And one of the things that I learned was that when you have a zoning bylaw and you seek that you want to amend it, it takes a lot of time to decide how you're going to do it and what you're going to do. And that should be an extensive public discussion at the planning board. So that people begin to understand that you're thinking about changing something that they had voted previously by a two-thirds vote. And so that, uh, we always had numerous discussions at the planning board as we were thinking about amendments. As we were crafting them, not the planning director coming in at the last minute and saying, these are the amendments I propose. And that made a big difference because we could figure out along the process, the issues that we were going to have to deal with pro and con. And, uh, so that by the time you get to the public hearing stage, which is required, the chances were that we had the bylaw amendment in the form that was going to pass. And in my career, we probably lost a total of five on the town meeting floor because of the way we did it. And one of the other things that we did is when town meeting was over, I would have the planning staff sit down over the next couple of months over the summer. Look at all the amendments or all the petitions that had gone to the zoning board of appeals in the prior year to see if there was something changing in our town that would cause us to make a change so that we didn't require people to go to the zoning board of appeals. And we would give that list of issues to the planning board by September and then work on it over the fall. And warrant articles had to be in, uh, by January, as I remember. So it's making it as public as possible is the critical thing.
Yeah, that's terrific. I wish every town, uh, had folks looking at the, the issues coming up before the Z B A, uh, to inform the, the planning board. That's, that's terrific. Other, uh, questions or, or comments? Everybody's ready to go to town meeting?
We're going to be experts.
Yeah, warrants are closing in the next week or two, so we better be ready.
I had a question.
Go ahead, Marcel.
Okay, um, so I live in Howard. I'm a, a property owner in Howard, but I grew up in Dennis.
Uh huh.
And I see a lot of changes happening in Dennis. I guess what my question is, um, am I able to go to the Dennis Town Meeting, even though I'm not a voter, but I still have concerns or I'd like to know what they're doing in the town?
Yeah, absolutely. You are.
I just wouldn't be able to vote.
You just wouldn't be able to vote. You'd be in that section that's cordoned off of non-voters. Um, you can also go, um, in that deliberative process that both Alan and Ned were talking about, uh, leading up to it, where the, really the, the meat and potatoes of policy decisions are, are made. Um, and you can, and you can speak as, you know, someone who grew up in the town, you can identify yourself as such. You know, understanding that people are, um, who, who are the decision-making folks on those various committees are going to, you know, weigh the comments of people who live currently in the town above people who don't. But that being said, I also think it's super important for people who are business owners in town or who work in town. Um, and part of that economic engine to make their voices heard as well. So there's another, you know, piece to all of this, which is kind of the, the social justice aspect, which is, you know, the decisions that have been made as far as where we are with single-family only zoning have a um, a very ugly, uh, origin, um, starting back in like the, the nineteen twenties as when, you know, the Supreme Court said, no, you can't explicitly ban people of color in your bylaws. So Pete, folks did the next best thing, which was, um, to ban the type of housing that was naturally attainable. Naturally attainable, given that so many forms of things like the G I bill and other things were not accessible. So, you know, all of your apartment buildings are banned, are made illegal. All of your multifamily are made illegal. Your, um, ADUs are made illegal. And then the people who are left making the decisions are the people who already have, they're already housed, they already have their home. Um, and there's a little bit of sometimes of a, of an approach of, you know, last one in closes the door behind you. And so I think we also have to bear that in mind when it comes to town meeting is that um, town meeting and local government is that, you know, I personally really believe, and I'm not speaking for any, any organization when I say this, but I personally believe that we as a community, um, as a Cape Cod community, as a Massachusetts, as a state, as, as a, as a country, need to make a better effort to include people who are not traditionally brought in from the ground up on these conversations. And the people who stand to benefit the most and the people who stand to be hurt the most by policies that exclude them. Um, and that is a whole other, you know, ball of wax, but I think it's, it deserves being, you know, said that. Um, like I said at the beginning of this, the origin of town meeting was when everyone could fit under one roof. But the, it was the voters and who the voters were were white men of a certain age. They had to be like, I think twenty-five. They had to own a certain amount of land. Um, you know, so it was very exclusive and it started in an exclusive fashion. And if your foundation is, starts in an exclusive foundation, uh, exclusive way, then four hundred years later, you're going to have some level of exclusion continuing. So that, that being said, I think for those of us who serve on boards and committees, who work in, you know, towns, um, it behooves us to, to try to improve that. Thank you. You don't have to raise your hand.
Can I get a, yeah, raising my hand. Um, to the question about, um, contributing to towns outside of your, wherever you live, for whatever reason, uh, uh, two things. I mean, I get emails all the time from residents, um, from other towns. And Steph rightly pointed out that in my case, I'm a Brewster selectman and, and that's the role that I play. So I, I, um, you know, take everybody's um, opinions, um, where they're coming from as part of that context. But at the same time, three of the most important issues that we deal with in Brewster and every town on the Cape deals with are housing wastewater and, uh, sustainable school programs. And those are regional issues, no matter how you cut it. So, um, it may be the case that the town meeting is up the appropriate outlet for some of the things you'd like to, um, express about what's happening in Dennis, but it might be that there are other outlets as well, um, whether it's uh, town committees or regional initiatives. I mean, we're doing one right now. This is a regional initiative. Uh, and those, those comments are always welcome, um, at other venues as well that, that may be, um, more regionally focused.
Yeah, absolutely. The, um, you know, that's another, that is another thing that if you decide that you go to town meeting and, um, like, hey, this is, this is doable, this is achievable, uh, to, to do this once a year or, you know, in cases like Yarmouth, which have two town meetings, um, one in the spring and one in the fall, that's called special town meeting. You know, making an effort to attend that. And you say after, you know, a year or two, hey, I like this. I think I could get more involved. Um, you know, serving on a town border committee is kind of the next step in that. And then, you know, one of the ways that you can also make your, your voice heard to, to Ned's point about the regionalization is, is tends to, towns tend to be very parochial. So tends to, towns tend to be very parochial. So I have heard proposals for something like half a dozen towns. Um, I think on the lower and outer Cape that are, you know, have been looking into having a pool. Do we really need six pools? Or do we need to re- maybe regionalize that? Um, do we, you know, like, especially when there are competing interests, like a massive housing crisis, you know, we don't have a shortage of pools. We have a, a hu- a housing shortage, right? So, so encouraging town leaders to be thinking regionally is another way that your voice, uh, can certainly be heard. Any other questions, comments, feedback?
Well, this was awesome. Thank you so much. I feel so much smarter.
Good. I hope I didn't like breeze through some of those slides too quickly.
A lot of information. You guys did a great job. Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you all for coming.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Tara. It's always nice to see our community partners like Habitat joining us and, um, seeing familiar faces. Um, great job, Steph and, and everybody. Um, yeah, last shout out. I mean, um, just going back to the town meeting schedule, um, just a shout out to our community partner CCYP, as Steph shared, um, just for providing, um, the spring town meeting schedule. Uh, Steph and I have a long time history with, um, CCYP. So we're excited to continue collaborating with them. Um, you can check out their civic and community engagement committee. You don't have to be young to get involved. Please, you know, consider that just as far as, um, you know, staying involved and, um, learning more about CCYP's advocacy arm. And, um, also they have an upcoming CCYP summit on April ninth. So, um, that's great. And, um, we look forward to staying in touch with everybody through Housing to Protect Cape Cod. Um, we had such a nice group tonight and we invite you all to stay connected with HBCC. Our next session is coming up on April ninth. Um, so we join, um, we invite you to join us for that informative municipal leader training that's geared more towards our more seasoned advocates, but it is open to the public and we welcome everyone, um, to jump in and learn more. Um, but yeah, stay tuned. We're lining up additional sessions leading up to our Housing to Protect Cape Cod Summit, which is, um, in October, which feels forever away, but it's coming up. Um, so we hope you all will join us and save that date in your calendars. Um, but yes, one last big thanks to Stephanie and Ned. Thank you both so, so much, uh, for a great session. And we look forward to staying in touch, sharing these materials and, um, sharing the recording so that you all can watch and listen later.
Yeah, wonderful.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Evening. Bye-bye.
Bye. You want to stop the recording?
Yes.